Hold on now, Josh. I've got something here to pass out.
Don't let him tell you.
You hear me? What do I do? I just have to log Scotty out? Is that what I do?
You don't touch it at all.
No, she told me to use Scotty. Gail, does this need to log him out? Do I just need to log him out?
All right, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started with our October Board meeting. At this time, I'll ask the Director of Schools, Donnie Poston, to say a word of prayer.
(inaudible) United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on your agenda, under recognition of guests, the first thing is go ahead and call the robe. So if you'll, everybody will log in. Madam Clerk, take the attendance. Nine board members present. Scott Hill is absent due to sickness, and we're now in order. Recognition of guests, the Campbell County High School JROTC could not be here tonight. They will be having a ribbon cutting at the ROTC building at Campbell County High School on Thursday, this Thursday, the 18th, at 2:15. And immediately after the ribbon cutting, they'll be presenting the Legion of Valor Award up there at the High School ROTC building. So that'll be Thursday at 2:15. Recognize Laura York. That problem has been taken care of. She will be here tonight. Next up, recognize Sharon Shepherd.
Mr. Chairman, Donnie, school members, as you all know, Donna and I are regular nurses for the Campbell County School System, and we are also certified Zima instructors. We promote health and wellness for the community. And we would like to take this time and tell you how much we thank you for Liz's room at Carolina Public School Gym for the three hours a week that we did from the time that we were allowed to use it. We understand that there was a conflict because that we work for profit, and we understand that. What we would like to do is let you know how much Zima has changed so many lives. And this is just a few. This is not all because we wouldn't have the time to tell it. And I say your name, I want you to stand. This is just a few success stories. Amanda Schell, she has lost a total of 63 pounds in 29 years since starting with Zima. Debbie Spencer, she has lost a total of 75 pounds. She is off of one blood pressure medication, and one of her diabetic pills has been cut in half. Renee Morris, she's lost a total of 42 pounds. Karen McQuire, she has lost a total of 25 pounds. Please say my name. 25 pounds. Her heart medication's been cut in half, and that might not sound like a lot, but she's not had a heart medication change in eight years, okay? So her cardiologist told her to absolutely whatever he did and not stop saying it. And Liz the Hand Queen has lost a total of 75 pounds. Like I said, give them all hand clean. And like I said, that's just a few. That's not a success story. What we would like to offer, Donna and I would like to give back to the school system and show our appreciation. As you all know, as far as if you have healthy employees, your employees will, number one, decrease your absenteeism as far as for your employees. You won't have to pay for subs. Your entrance premium should go down, and being a healthy employee, you're going to work better, better role model, and I think we should support that. And what Donna and I would like to do is offer a 30-day pilot trial for your employees free of charge, one time a week over 30 days period. And we are just asking for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Well, congratulations to you all for your success stories, too. That's fantastic. The pilot program, Donnie, is that something that you can do in-house, or is that something you'd like for guidance from the Board on?
Well, wouldn't they guide us? But we, I mean, there's no, there's no profit in things that's voluntary program. We'd be willing to support that. Of course, I'd just have to lose about 35 or 40.
And we would like for you all to do it, too.
I just can't do all them jerks.
Mr. Chairman, and I would like to commend Sharon and Donna. You all are making a difference in the community. And I know it's me being Building Committee Chairman, there's been a lot of things said about that I'm against some of the people doing, but I'm not. As I said when I met you ladies, we have a duty to make sure that our buildings at this particular time will adhere to the performance contract and train when we start being monitored in the spring of next year. If not, and our electric bills and heat bills go up, and they're not within the range that we're being monitored on, we're going to have to pay that based into that paper. That was the only thing that, as far as I'm concerned with the Building Committee and the use of facilities, that I was ever concerned with.
At my point, I mean, we rented the facility, and that's being known that we were not just there for a short.
And you were paying how much a month?
$100, and that's per the school system. So I feel like, and we appreciate your support.
And are you going to use the school building for this project?
Yes, it will be for your school employees.
Will it be for one particular school building, or are you going to different schools?
We can go to different schools. However, we want to do the pilot program.
Okay, and will it be done, probably done how many times a week?
I said once a day. I mean, once a week for 30-day trial.
Once a week.
Pilot program.
And will you have some kind of sign-in sheet?
We do have a disclaimer.
Or, I mean, like, the people there, we know it's the employees, the school system.
Yes, it's not only the employees.
It's all employees, certified, classified, all employees, right?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Does this need Board action?
Donnie just said that it could be done.
All it needs is permission for the grass work. It's a bottom trust setup, isn't it? You all got permission for misactions?
Yes.
Good. Go ahead and exercise.
All right. Thank you again, Sharon, and thank you ladies again for coming last month and this month.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Sharon, I've been there, and I know how it is, and it's real good, and I enjoy it and everything. How are you going to follow the progress? Will you follow the progress of each employee and then report?
The employees send it theirself. They come along through their own money, just like these ladies do. We tell them to weigh monthly and to measure a group start, to measure their, you know, to make sure, to show that they're listening to and to weigh, and to do that monthly for thirty minutes. And they, it's their responsibility to track the data. And of course, when they visit their physician and stuff, too, several of them.
Yeah. Well, it might be good. This is just a suggestion from me, if maybe you could report that progress back to us and let us know what kind of progress they have made and stuff. You know, it's just a suggestion, if you want to do that.
I would appreciate, like Danny, that's all right, too.
Danny, was it as hard as they say it is?
It's hard. I worked about 30 minutes, and then I had to rest, and I got back in the cool down bar. It's really good exercise. I got nothing against exercise or nothing. And I've been fine on coming back. I just had a question.
All right. All right. Next up on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Motion approved.
Motion made by Mr. Ork. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Same by Mr. Lawson. Any discussion? If not, cast your vote. Voting on the consent agenda.
And what is that?
Approval of the consent agenda, amen to the previous meeting, September 11th.
Okay, I just make sure it's what it was. I'm still learning.
All right. Any member wish to change their vote?
No.
If not, reveal the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Crichtwood, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Orrick, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
All right. Next up, approval of the regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, can I, could we add an item for discussion without legal?
We'd require a two-thirds vote, wouldn't it?
That's okay. I'll bring it up in my time.
Okay.
Sorry.
Is there a motion on the regular agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Creakmore. Is there a second?
Second.
Same by Mr. Burge. Any questions or comments? If not, cast your vote. This is for the approval of the regular agenda. Anybody wish to change their vote? If not, please reveal the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Crichtwood, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Orrick, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Comments from the Chair? A couple things. I want to remind everybody about the Stand in the Gap program at Campbell County High School. It's going to be on Sunday, November the 4th, at 3 o'clock. It's a continuation of what they did last year, and it's a movement by local churches in our area to cry out for God to heal our land from drug and alcohol abuse. It's a very great program, and there's really good people behind that. So I would encourage that. And also, we've gotten our three sections of our policy manual in. And what I would like to do, and I'll look for the Board to get for guidance, I would like to set a workshop between now and the next meeting, so we can have all three of these sections of our policies in front of us, we can talk about it, we can discuss it, and we can get our input from our attorney on, you know, the way forward. And that way, beginning next month, we can go ahead and start voting these policies and start getting them in place. So if it's okay, I'll be in touch with Gail tomorrow, and we'll start polling the Board for a day between now and, between now and the next Board meeting for that. Yeah, for a workshop. Also, want to recognize our Boy Scouts who are in the crowd tonight. Guys, stand up. We appreciate you all for being here tonight. We appreciate you all being here tonight. Appreciate you all's parents for being here tonight as well. So that's all. I have the Director's Monthly Report.
Make my comments brief. Follow up on what he said about the working on Board and workshop on October the 23rd, Thursday, October 23rd. I'd like to invite as many board members that would like to come to our downstairs office from 11:30 to 12:30, and try to get a representative from each of the schools. We're going to have a conference webinar on collaborative conferencing. And so that's on Thursday, October 25th, from 11:30 to 12:30. This will be presented by the TSB. So try to get a representative to camp from each school. Few days ago, our Board members had a session in Oneida, had a training session, and our Chairman had to be in the Midwest for a job that he has. He had to be out there, so he wasn't there to receive a certificate. So a certificate of achievement presented by TSB, Tennessee School Board Association, to Josh Parker, representing Campbell County for achievement of a Level 1 recognition pin in the TSB's Boardshipship Program, September 2012. So we were talking at the table, we give it to him tonight, so he's here.
He missed to get mail again.
All right. Recognize Jeff Marlowe, Director of Finance. Mr. Marlowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Beginning with the monthly financial reports, I sent you out the reports for July and August since the budget was adopted. Your review will review the August report, since it's the most timely. Beginning with the federal purpose school fund, cash with the trustee, we have just over $4.297 million. Coming over a couple pages, revenue, 9.7% through August, 3.64 million of the 37.4 million estimate. Next page, over your expenditures, 15.3%, not uncommon. You have to, beginning of the year, we don't have any profit taxes, we'll start receiving those until this month. The notices may have come to some of you in the mail today, actually. They were mailed out Friday of last week. So some people will be getting them, and we hope to have turnaround in the month of October, and this will balance itself out. On the federal project school fund, have cash of $488,000. As you know, that's predominantly made up of the $500,000 that we have in there to allow the cash flow of that operation. Revenues are in balance with the expenditures to date, 9.4% compared to 9.2%. And the final fund, this is simple cafeteria fund, cash with trustee of $530,000, and revenues at 10.3%, expenditures at 14.7%. In this particular fund, as you know, at the beginning of every school year and in the end in the month of January, you have to buy inventory before you can produce the meals and sell the meals. So we're right on pace where we would be through this period of time. I'll answer any questions you may have on within the budget fund. And I'd like to get a motion to accept those, please.
Motion by Mr. Ork. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rutherford. Any discussion? If not, let's vote. Voting on the financial reports. Anybody wish to change their vote? If not, reveal the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Crichtwood, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Orrick, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
All right. Budget amendments and resolutions, Mr. Marlowe.
We have 10 budget amendments that were mailed out as part of your packets before last. I'll review any of them in detail that you would like to. The only material one that has any effect upon local funding is Resolution 10-4. And record had mentioned to you guys at the last meeting or the meeting before last that we were going to have to address the structural analysis at Campbell County High School. And by good fortune, good management, whatever you want to call it, we have enough money as our increased funded fund balance of $85,000 at the close of our 6/12 year to allow us to provide for that. The estimate is somewhere between $15,000 and $75,000, the cost of that analysis. This amendment provides the whole $85,000 in case you have to pay for other plans or different things when you get into it. If in fact you get to the spot where you have some left over, you can divert that into what ultimately will probably be some part of the construction process up there. It isn't known and won't be known until you get further into exactly what's going to have to be done there. Some of the things from my communications with Keith Julian and MBI, as well as conversations through picking up on the reports from Building Committee's record, his report stuff, some of the stuff up there probably won't be too dynamic, but you have a couple of places where you may have some inferior support involved, but could have some outlay of substantial amount. But you're going to have to do this review to satisfy the Board motion. Not much you can do about it one way or the other, except to approve it. And like I said, we have the good fortune to be in a position to address it without it having to decrement your existing capital outlay funds or something else that you guys were planning to do. There's one other thing I want to point out in one of the amendments. I find it not quick. It's just a typographical error that I want you to make a note of, and we'll get it corrected for the one for record. It's budget amendment 10-9. The sub-fund there of 912 should be 913. 912 is a carryover preschool grant, and it will be 913 to 912. Rest of the amendments are mostly just simple alignment amendments and stuff like that, nothing of any materiality.
All right. Are we going to discuss each one of them?
We can make a motion however you want, and then we'll go into discussion if we want to do it as a block, or if there's certain ones you want to pull out.
There's a couple I'd like to pull out.
Okay. Let's, if you want to make a motion to approve the one that you all want to vote on, say.
Well, I don't know what everybody else wants to do. I'm just stating my concern.
That's, we'll just vote on them individually. We'll do that then.
Thank you.
Let me ask you one question. What is our current capital outlay line item?
Um, hang on a minute. The, what we call the regular capital outlay line item has $246,048 remaining of the $367,310 that was appropriated there. In addition to the regular capital outlay line item, we have a couple of pools of individualized monies. The monies for the, I forgot, I forgot what you call it. Learning Academy. The monies for the East Lapholak Learning Academy have all been used. The one for Jellicoe, there's $98,650 that hasn't, any of that been used at this point in the row. And we have $16,863 for the field repair at Jellicoe Elementary Football Field that we received from the FEMA, FEMA monies. And they're setting appropriated, it's not being utilized yet, $16,683. But for what you guys would normally call your recurring regular capital outlay, you got $246,000 of both as of today.
We'll just go through them one at a time, please.
All right. Beginning with budget amendment one, the, in the general purpose school fund, the grant funding for Save the Children Foundation had been decreased, appropriation was being reduced accordingly. Exhibit A, see a decrease in revenues of $1,917, and corresponding decreases in appropriations for $1,917. You want to do these, Mr. Chairman, before I go into the next one, and get a motion that way, or you want to make a motion on each one of them?
As you explained, we'll ask for, what's the pleasure of the Board? You've heard the explanation of 10-1.
Motion by Mr. Ork.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I want to ask a question.
Yeah.
Okay, we're on 10.1 here, right?
10-1, yeah.
Okay. I don't understand, I'm new, I'm sorry, I just don't understand anything that's written down here, contributions and gifts. Could you care to explain to me please?
We are constrained to account titling by state charred accounts, and further constrained by the State Department of Education to even fewer account titles than that which would otherwise exist. The program we're discussing here is some contributions, just like a small grant, from the Save the Children Foundation. We had originally planned and believed that we would receive $81,498. We've now been notified that that's going to be reduced to $79,581. In return for that notification, we have to lower the appropriations that money spent down to the amount of revenue that we're going to receive. So we're now reducing those appropriations by the same $1,917, which means that this budget amendment's in balance. So you can vote on this, knowing that it's an adjustment of revenue down to make it.
I understand. I understand. I'm new, I'm sorry.
No problem. That's how we learn. I already have a motion by Mr. Ork. Is there a second?
I second.
Same by Mr. Ork. Any further discussion on 10-1? If not, cast your vote. Anybody wish to change their vote? If not, please reveal the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Crichtwood, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, no. Orrick, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes.
I'm 10-2, Marlowe. 10-2 is dealing with the school coordinator health grant, and in this case, opposite from the one we just did, we have received notification that the grant is increasing by $21,548, and you see an increase in appropriation of $21,548. See how the difference is there, Danny?
Yes, sir.
And that's all there is to this?
All right. Motion on 10-2.
I'm going to ask a question about this one.
Go ahead.
Who's in charge of that, and where does that go?
Uh, I think, to hold this, I think the coordinator over that was Alexis Kaiser, but I believe she still is.
She's the only coordinator of that?
Right. She works with her.
The other salaries, wages, is that going? I asked you, Mr. Poston, and he didn't send me any mail. No one's getting a raise there?
No.
But it's there in case you do want to get somewhere else?
Yeah, as Richard explained, they divided it down into each category. End of the year, if we need to make a budget transfer, we can do that.
And you budgeted at the first of the year for zero travel, but now you've got $4,000 in it. You anticipate that they're going to be going somewhere?
They also provide some travel.
Or is that local here?
For our nurses, too.
Oh, so that could actually go for the nurses. And then, of course, you've increased the supplies and materials, about $6,000, is it right?
Eleven.
Eleven, thank you. And that would be what kind of supplies and materials?
That's a whole range of material for the schools and their health and safety programs, just all types of things. It'll be playgrounds, balls or something like that. It could be a high, a blood pressure cuts.
We should have plenty of supplies.
Yeah.
Well, you've got 11,000, so you're questioning.
Sixteen.
Sixteen thousand.
All right. You've heard the explanation, 10-2. What's the pleasure of the Board? There's not a motion yet, guys. We can't vote yet because there's not been a motion yet.
I'll make a motion, approve it.
Say.
Motion by Mr. Ork. Second by Mr. Burge. If you're back to South.
Just go ahead.
Yeah. Go ahead and vote.
If you want to change your vote, you can.
Vote. Anybody wish to change their vote? If not, reveal the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Crichtwood, yes. Lawson, no. Miller, yes. Orrick, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
10-3, Marlowe.
10-3 is in the general purpose school fund, deals with some carryover funds associated with school climate grant, and reconciling of those carryover funds, and also some appropriation of equity from the Georgia State University I-3 program.
Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion, 10-3, Marlowe.
Uh, 10-3 is in the General Purpose School Fund. It deals with some carryover, uh, funds associated with the school climate grant and reconciling of those carryover funds. And also some appropriation of equity from the Georgia State University I-3 program, which is being used to assist the substitute teachers and developmental, like staff, in staff development costs. In net, you have a decrease in revenues of 251 dollars for by cents. You have a increase in appropriation, mostly for the certified substitute or non-certified substitutes, of 3,223 dollars and eight cents. And you have a decrease in that reserve that we were talking about, committed to the case of 37, 34, 74, 53, the balance in. What's the pleasure on 10-4?
So moved.
Move on. Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Burge. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? Cast your vote. Anybody wish to change their vote? If not, please reveal the vote.
Parker, yes. Garge, yes. Collins, yes. Creggmore, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Cory, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion, 10-6.
Resolution, 10-4. That's the one I reviewed with you at the onset, Chairman. Deals with, uh, providing for the structural engineering services at Campbell County Conference of High School. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I, I only have one question, and I guess Keith, you could answer that if you care of.
Okay.
In, in my correspondence with you, the worst-case scenario would have been up to 40 or 50,000 of the survey, of the analysis. Now, of course, Mr. Marlowe's indicated to us it could be any worse than 50 to 75,000. I don't understand how it jumped from when we discussed up 50,000 and it's now up 75,000.
I think we proposed about a, somewhere in there, probably with 7,000 dollar fee to do an initial analysis.
Yeah, 60-some hundred.
Uh, we really don't know the scope of the work we will do till we've done analysis.
Right.
So...
But didn't you give me some correspondence that on the worst end it was 40 to 50,000?
I think, I think the, the initial faded with seven and then to do the, actually calculations and analysis and, or calculation, uh, construction documents, so on and so forth. Unless I'm wrong, the number would be between 10 and 50,000.
Are you going to nail that down a little more clear, Mr. Marlowe, or are you going to leave it from a range because it's in contradiction to what they started out with? Again, we, now we're telling you something to do.
The communication I have, um, says somewhere between 50 and 75,000 in total, or 50 and 71,200, or 75,000, 50 and 75,000. And how it will be handled to make sure that it is an open door is each phase will result in a specific contract and purchase. So, if this amendment is approved by tonight by you all and then Monday night by the committee, the funds will be available for the director of school then. And the first one they'll do is the 7,000 dollar one. And then, once they get through with that, each one of those there after will be a result in yet again another transaction, another transaction. And as I started when we began our discussion initially, once we get to the completion of all of those things, if we end up with 15 or 20,000 dollars left, those monies will be in position to be then diverted to begin to serve as the construction dollars to provide some of that when in fact y'all have to, if you do, do any physical work. And you will note on the amendment, um, this is especially for Daniel, that most of the rest of you know, that 000001 on the very beginning of that cost center denotes Campbell County Conference of High School. So, that's how we know that the money put here won't go wherever else. That's how we keep track of it.
Keith, do we think that our exposure on these repairs is going to be a big number?
I don't know.
Uh, once again, we, we don't, we don't know the scope. The, uh, the reinforcement of the law to the auditorium, I believe, was 94,000 dollars for just the auditorium. So, if, you know, it, it, like I said, once again, it depends upon the scope. Once you look at it and see what you have to do, I mean, I have to believe it, it's, it's not going to be cheap.
The girls' dressing room wall is another situation that may be even more expensive than the auditorium wall.
Unbelievable.
Because of where he's at and how it's looking.
I don't know how much it would be.
That's what this money's for.
Yeah.
Determine how much it is.
Well, from what I'm picking up here, we don't know what it's going to be. I like to know what I'm voting on. If I'm going to pay 10 dollars, I'm going to vote 10 dollars. If I'm going to pay 20, I'm going to pay 20. So, what, what is the amount? Well, I think we're, I'm not going to vote for anything, then come back and say it's going to cost this much money. If we need it, I'll vote for it.
Here's what we're doing in this amendment, Eugene. This is to cover the worst-case scenario on the performance of just the engineering and work and plan development work. This doesn't have anything to do with the actual bricks and mortar work.
Okay, this is just the planning procedure.
That's correct.
And they don't know how much they're going to charge us to plan.
They give us, uh, a range of between 50,000 dollars to 75,000.
Well, it'll be 75,000.
The, the very first one is going to be 7,000 dollars and that'll be done once we get our budget right.
They find out how much money we have, they'll use it all.
They'll start holding their money.
So, they've been pretty good to work with so far.
Okay, yeah, I know what we pay them well.
Well, can, can, can we get a second opinion? I'm just asking, if, instead of one architect, do we have two architects?
You could, but then you have to pay for two architects.
Two, two processes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Uh, we've, uh, we've been doing business with NBI for about five years, something like that, maybe six at this point. And, um, they've served us well in the capacity that they've done so far. If we were to try to hire somebody new tomorrow for this particular project specifically, it would cost, in my opinion, more money because of what they have already had to learn associated with the renovation job that they already did up there and the discoveries that have been made. One of the things that they discovered up there through the life renovation project, which is definitely causing some of your problems there, that school is built, as I understand it, the walls have no steel and no, uh, cores. So, you've got a freestanding machinery wall that doesn't have any steel in the wall and doesn't have any concrete cores inside the cells in that wall.
Are we talking about the wall that I tore?
Yeah, that's the one.
Where that big crack's falling down the corner.
Yeah.
If you get larger, it's been up there for 37 or 40 years. Uh, I mean, we've been talking about this. Is it getting worse?
Well, I think that what's brought it to a new, uh...
They used to call it fixy.
I think what has brought it to a new head, so to speak, is, and it's what the director told you guys, I think, two meetings ago, but I don't know what's part of that. Karen Burkhardt, who's the new Farm Marshal, uh, Representative, she is forcing the school system to do an evaluation, to have an outside party to give the school system a full analysis so that you can decide whether or not, if in fact you can just stay there the way it is or what it's going to have to be.
Kind of like the leaning tire of peas out of it.
She's not worried about how we're going to pay for it. I have a question. If we do approve this amendment, how long before we have an answer on, as far as what we're up against there, Mr. Genon?
Yes.
Uh, it seems to me our proposal said that we would, we could do the first analysis in 30 days, from, from the date of the first order. Then we would have some idea as to the scope of government for this whole school.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to reiterate that the only problem I have with this, and I, I'm the one that has been telling you all how important this is and how it's got to be done, but it's jumped 25,000 dollars in the possibility. And that's not the correspondence that I have. I wish to have it with me, but it's not. And I'm just, I don't want them to feel like that they've got this took care of and already in the box and charge us an extra 25,000 dollars when it was clear that the worst scenario would go over 50,000 dollars. So, that's the only problem I have about this when they give their information to Mr. Marlowe is different than what they relayed to me.
If you, uh, want to feel more comfortable instead of you see, why don't we offer the amendment instead of making 85,000 dollars, make it 50,000 dollars? The 35,000 dollars isn't going to fly away?
No, no, I agree with that.
And that way you'd have it where you've got 50 appropriated and then if in fact it ends up costing something greater than that, we come back to a supplement?
Yeah, that sounds a lot better.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Please stick with what the initial correspondence was.
That would be a way to proceed and not, uh, be gratuitous at the same time.
Appreciate that, Mr. Marlowe.
All right, so who will make a motion to approve 10-4 as amended?
I move as 50,000 dollars.
Motion by Mr. Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Danny Wilson. Any further discussion?
Change it 50.
Not, you ready to vote? Go ahead and vote. Anybody wish to change their vote? If not, announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Garge, yes. Collins, yes. Creggmore, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Cory, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion, 10-6.
Thank you. Resolution 10-5.
10-5 is in Title III program, uh, and is to provide for increase in service staff development costs of 355 dollars.
What's the pleasure on 10-5?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Move by Mr. Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ord, any discussion? If not, go ahead and cast your vote. Any member wish to change their vote? If not, announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Garge, yes. Collins, yes. Creggmore, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Cory, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion, 10-6.
Since we're at the halfway point, do y'all still want to keep going individually from here on out?
I, I would like to.
Okay.
But okay with everything.
Okay.
I mean, I, I have to learn sometimes.
Okay. Resolution 10-6, 10-6, Mr. Marlowe.
10-6 is also in the Federal Purpose School Fund. It deals with Title I funding for the preschool. Um, earlier I was talking to Daniel, told him that the state prescribes the start charted account titles that we have to use and further limits those down to certain account titles, even though they're in the state approved charted accounts, are not usable for certain parts of education funds. The State Department of Education has sent notification that the preschool category 73400 is no longer a category that is usable within the Title I grant accounting documents. So, the money to provide for those is being realigned from 73400 into 71100, which is just called the restructuring of the charted, state charted accounts. And as you can see, it's just taking out 73455 from 73400 and putting that same 73,455 into 71100.
You've heard the explanation. What's the, uh, pleasure of the board on 10-6?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Burge, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller. Any further discussion? If not, cast your vote. Any member wish to change their vote? If not, announce the vote, please.
Parker, yes. Garge, yes. Collins, yes. Creggmore, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Cory, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion, 10-6.
Thank you. Resolution 10-7.
10-7 deals with a new part of money that is called the 21st Century Communing Learning Center. It's under Title IV, Part B. Uh, it's a program similar to the LEAP's After School Program and goes from September 1, 2012 through June 2013. You see an increase in the other federal through state funding of 300,000 dollars and you see an increase in, uh, mostly wages and benefits and some supplies and materials in staff development, a majority except for 20,000 in wages and benefits.
You've heard the explanation. What's the pleasure of the board on resolution 10-7?
Uh, is this LEAP's program that what they have at the school?
Yeah.
Is to help students that are behind and they do some remedial work for students that stay at the school. Is that all through from what grade level?
We've got it all the way through the middle school now.
Middle school, mostly middle school.
Grade school, grade school and middle school, elementary, middle.
Grade and middle. Okay.
And we've also got another program that's through the extension department at Elton Valley that does something similar.
Uh, Mr. Poston, when we have these programs, uh, do we ever do any kind of evaluation, see if we really have the old kids?
Well, we have done a formal evaluation of them.
Well, I mean, I talked to two or three kids and they told, we'd go in there and play around and the teacher checks in with us every once in a while. Uh, I never do see any avail. I'd like, you know, you give them a test and they're evidently low. When they go in there, how do they come out?
We're hoping they're doing well.
Do they move out?
We're hoping so.
I, I know we hope, but do we ever know?
This is new. We only had two programs in the county last year, if I understand it correctly, was at Laffolit Middle and, uh, Laffolit Elementary Valley, you're right. Now, this year we've got it in all the other schools, so it's, it's a new brand, uh, law of principles and people involved in that type of screen. And then Elton Valley got the one from the extension one. It involves tutoring and involves gangs, it involves studying and...
Yeah, and I, I know, uh, I'm always interested, though, if, if we're really making progress. The reason I'm asking this question, I'm taking a little time here, but I, I like to understand what we're trying to do because I just got to talking to, uh, an educator about what we're doing is for is making improvements in that. We're still lagging way behind in Campbell County on ACT scores at both high schools. And his theory was we're going to have to start doing something down here at this level and bring them all up, which that makes sense. And we're having all these programs and I, I'm for these if they're doing anything. Now, we used to have a Title I, uh, pull-out program. Now, you remember? And it wasn't worth 15 cents. If you pulled the kids out and put them in over here, they got further behind. And I ran them off of the hill. I wouldn't let them bet Jack's brother more. I said, we're going to teach all the kids and I wouldn't let them pull them out and let them play and get away behind. Now, that's, that's exactly what happened. Now, these LEAP programs and different programs, I, I never do ever get any report of any kind whether you actually helped that kid improve grade-wise after he's been in the program. Can he read better? Can he work math better? And does his scores come up?
You don't know if there's any...
Mr. Poston, what the address is there? Uh, there absolutely is. This is the first year we've got the 21st Century Classrooms After School. Those six grants are provided for each of the schools in a different capacity as to the numbers of students. Every child is assessed, is how they come in. We are responsible for reporting to the State Department every day what activity they're doing, if they're coming up, if they're improving. At the end of the year, if she comes in, it's Laura Nippon, Natalie, she'll come in with me and go around to those schools. And every school, every classroom, we can tell you, did we have any improvement with these kids? They started it last year with the LEAP's grant, but I didn't have anything to do with that. That was Dr. Williams. But she still has those two. These six, there's accountability. If we don't make it, we will know it. We will know because that's where our funding will be next year. If we don't make it and we don't see progress, we won't have that money. They will not refund every year if you're not showing progress in these kids.
I know what you're saying. I know our guards just bet on everything coming to us now from federal and state level. Accountability or something.
We put down per minute, how many hours, this is after school or before school. If that child has been reading for 30 minutes, he comes into the computer, I'm one of the programs, and Jack's starting teaching me how to do, I'm still not sure how to do it. But we've got someone at each school that logs that in that day. If they're doing 30 minutes, may it. We know exactly the activity they did, how long they stayed in that activity. Did they make any progress? We turn that in on a monthly basis and we can give you all the reports. Probably first, we just started about 11 months of grants we're awarded. But we can probably start giving all of them monthly reported if that's, you know. And then at the end of the year, we have a yearly report and we have to show progress.
Is there any oversight as far as, I guess the principal leaves around 4:00.
We have one person.
Is there anybody from central office or anybody like that that actually pops up and sees that they're doing any of that?
Yes, that's where Dr. Reynolds did it last year and she will this year with two that we regot through the LEAP's grant. With me, those six schools I already know, I've been meeting with their teachers, they actually have regular grants. For example, and I won't use names, but there's a person at each school, care of elementary has got a person in charge of response and fills out the information, sends it straight back to me. We've got somebody at Valley View, but that's in LEAP's. We've got somebody at La Follette Middle.
Were you talking about a teacher?
No, I'm talking about usually we've got principals at the schools. There is one teacher, let me think, there's one teacher. Other than that, it's assistant principals or principals because this is an addition to their salary. So they have to be there at the school and they've got a lot of accountability.
Well, you're actually paying them overseas a little bit.
Absolutely. There is no money in it for my salary, it's just theirs.
Eugene, what was the ACT scores? He finally got those.
The ACT scores for the high school, 17.1, and the state average is up almost 19. And for JELICO, it's 15.1 or 15.2. We're way behind. And we keep saying we're doing great on all these test scores, but what good?
Yeah, what they've done too, they've added children that have never been tested before.
I know they all have to be tested, but so does everybody in the state. In other words, I'm saying this, I'll use JELICO for instance, why wouldn't JELICO have as good a test scores as say like Colfield? They're basically the same size school. I think maybe JELICO's a large school. Why wouldn't they keep up with them? That's what I'm saying. Now, I'm not against this program I was talking about there, but at the end of the year, if they're keeping a record of this progress, I like to see it. If it's Johnny Jones was behind in reading and at the end of the year he's come up, you know, we graded on proficient or advanced or whatever, did he go from down here to that? That should be a way for us to improve our scores so that we'll get rated higher as, you know, with the total program. And if that's working that way, that's great.
And you know that.
But I never know whether, you know, you sit on the school board and you get thinking, they'll come up and say, "Well, what's this program for? Where's all that money go?" That's what they come and ask me. They'll say, "Where's all that money go?" Well, does it ever help anybody? If it does, that's great. But Campbell County is, can make a tremendous lot of improvement because you check the ACT scores, 15.2 and 17.1. And I believe JELICO made a one-point increase or decrease. And they were 15.1, might have gone to 15.2, or they 15.2 and went down to 15.1, I'm not sure. But then in Campbell County was 16 something, went up to 17.1. But we are not up to the state average. And so that ought to be our goal.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's what I'm referring to. And these programs that we have, if they're making us, helping us improve and reach that goal, that's great.
One of the things that I really think we're going to end up having to have in our system like they have in a lot of the other systems, is one person designated as the data person and all they do is collect all this information.
See if we're making progress.
Absolutely. And almost every system now is going in that direction. Now, we've got so many different accountability guards put in place now. We talked about this at our, some of our staff meeting the last month or so. We're going to have to continue providing, and we'll make a commitment here tonight. I know you probably haven't had it in the face based on what you said, but we'll try, we'll try as a central office to provide you as much data as we can on the progress of these kids. And it'll add additional workforce, that's fine. We've already got things in place now because of the grants that require us to do these things, so we'll just make added information without violating any confidential law. We can give you information without naming names.
That's great.
All right, resolution 10-7, is there a motion to approve?
It's mostly approved.
Move by Mr. Craigmore, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Burge, all right, we're ready to vote. Cast your vote. Anybody wish to change their vote? If not, announce the vote, please.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Craigmore, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Warrick, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Resolution 10-8.
10-8 has to do with first to the top funding and sub-funds for the previous cycle. Subfund 581 deals with the 11, 10, 11 year end. Subfund 582 deals with the 11, 12 year end. And the new subfund 583 is for the 12, 13 year. And they are being reconciled with the state documents. You can see an increase in 581 of $19,783.47. An increase in 582 of $78,102.70. And a deep increase of $5 in 583 for a total increase in funding for the first race to the top. Now, first to the top, you speak race to the top, $97,891.17. Most of these funds are being appropriated with some type of wage line item either in the other salaries and wages category or in the teacher's line item and the associated benefits to provide the same. And you have some realignments for the 583 appropriations are being reviewed to allow for 581, 582 to be increased. A total increase of $97,891.17 in appropriations to balance with the $97,891.17 increase.
Heard the explanation from the Director of Finance. What's the board's pleasure on resolution 10-8?
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Worf, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rutherford, any discussion? If not, you ready to vote? Cast your vote. Any member wishes to change their vote? If not, please announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Craigmore, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Warrick, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Resolution 10-9.
Deals with the Federal Project Fund, Special Ed Preschool Funding. You have a decrease in revenue and they make the note statement there that the sub-fund number should be 913 opposed to 912. A decrease of $965 in revenue and a corresponding decrease in educational assistance of $965.
Heard the explanation, what's the pleasure? Motion to approve.
How much of a motion will be approved?
Motion by Mr. Lawson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Burge, any discussion? If not, you ready to vote? Cast your vote.
It's 10-9, right?
Yeah. Any member wishes to change their vote? If not, please announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Craigmore, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Warrick, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes.
Thank you. And last but not least, resolution 10-10, Mr. Marlowe.
10-10 is the only one dealing with simple cafeteria fund, fund number 143. And it is a recognition of receiving greater funding from the Fresh Foods, Fresh Fruits and Best Of Us Program. A grand total increase in revenue to USDA of $28,083. And the appropriation of same, $28,083. The largest items obviously are food supplies, grand total of about $4,000 of the $28,000.
All right, you've heard the explanation. What's the board's pleasure on resolution 10-10?
I make a motion with that.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
I'll make a second, too.
Second by Mr. Burge, any further discussion? If not, you ready to vote? Cast your vote.
Jesus.
Anybody wish to change their vote? If not, please announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Craigmore, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, no. Warrick, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Review the bids.
We don't have any bids at this time. We do have a couple of items for requests and permission to advertise. First one is request permission to renew the bid contract for 12, 13 year for the school nutrition program. Bids could be renewed or industrial institutions could be wholesale supply bid, Norvex Supply and Sunshine Produce Incorporated and the Reinhardt Food Service. It gets sent to y'all, those have had letters out. And we also have a request to advertise for a special ed 2001 Chevrolet Bluebird Mini bus to be sold to certain schools and boots and food.
All right. You've heard the two requests to advertise bids, what's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion with.
All right. Motion by Mr. Lawson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rutherford, any further discussion? If not, go ahead and cast your vote.
Thank you. Please. In the evening, we have nothing on the contract at this time, Mr. Chair, so that concludes my section.
All right. Item M, update from FAECOM regarding individual school activity files.
I assume everyone received their reports. Anyone having questions?
Mr. Comer, I do. At Valley View, did the Tri-County Basketball League pay the $1,000 donation to that?
As of September 30, also.
Okay.
When's these spreadsheets going to get smaller? The number of pages.
I've got a comment, Mike, about what he said. Last year they mentioned about the use of the school, paying the use of the school. So Steve came down and he made a statement, you know, about dividing some money with, you know, the league divided money with the school. So they found out then that the league was 501.
3C.
And they had, it was nonprofit. And Dale found out it was nonprofit, so he said, "Well, we'll work on something later." And it was never mentioned that they owed anything, and that's what it was.
Mr. Collins, I think you should ask your junior pro league, give their $1,000 that they paid because they have paid. And I don't think they should pay and the league up here not.
Any other questions for Ms. Comer?
But you see, there's been a lot of misinformation given out.
Just for the record, there's no 501-3C on file at Central Office, is that not right? Johnny Bruce says he does not have a copy of that.
He said he turned, they said he turned, I mean Marvin said he turned it in.
To Dale or to the Central Office?
I think to Johnny, if I'm not mistaken.
I talked to Johnny Bruce today, he says he does not have.
What did you talk to him, what time he told?
About 2:00.
So all I know Marvin said it did. So it does make, you know, they had that, the year's already passed.
Right.
So then there was nothing binding that they had to pay $1,000. But that's what we had to listen all year about use of the school, payment of the school and all that. So we ground that into the ground last year, so I don't think we need to start with the same plan this year.
But if they're not a 501-3C and they use it for profit, we have a policy that says plainly, just like the, just like the Zumba that says you cannot use school facilities for private profit. Now, if he has a 501-3C, I don't see any problem with it.
He said he did, and that's reason.
But there's not one on file at Central Office.
He said he did, and I think Marvin, if I'm not mistaken, turned that into Johnny Bruce last year. I don't know for sure, but that's, I think that's what he said. I even talked to him today and they're supposed to have a copy of this.
Any other questions for Ms. Comer? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think, let me make one more statement. I think instead of somebody getting out and running their mouth and saying this, that and the other, they all make sure that they know what they're talking about.
I agree.
All right, items for action. A, approve a 10-month rental agreement for La Follette Middle School, copier. Two, business machines company, the cost of the rental agreement will be paid by La Follette Middle School, that is in your attachment.
Thank God. I'll make that motion to approve it.
Motion by Mr. Worf to approve, I believe it's $300 a month.
Yeah.
So motion by Mr. Worf, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Second by Mr. Rutherford, any further discussion?
I've got a question as to about that. I thought we were going to, once the contract expired, if they was going to check and see about giving them all the money and having contract with each school.
I tried, we did.
Yeah, we've got, one company's already done one study, we got another company doing another study.
Oh, it's still out there.
In fact, they went in with fall break and some schools didn't.
So this is just a 10-month lease, that's it? Or is it?
Yeah. Take it to the end of your calendar.
Okay.
And La Follette Middle School is paying, we're not paying.
Yeah, that's right. They need to start paying.
Any further discussion? If not, cast your vote. Anybody wish to change their vote? If not, please announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Craigmore, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Warrick, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Approve item B, approve archery for all Campbell County schools.
I have took initiative on that and I talked to a lot of the people who were certified in archery at the schools. Wyodoke and Wynne Schools are kind of back in the bag back there, and they requested that they get this archery. We only had it planned for like two schools, I believe it is, I talked to Gail, is she here? I guess not. I talked to Gail, what's her name?
Stanley.
Okay. Well, I talked to her and she said that she could put it in all the schools for $4,500. And then she said it may be a possibility over the, we'd get some money back on that from certain grants. Excuse me, but she said for $4,500, we can put it in all of the schools, every one of them. We only initially had it for Jacksonburg Middle School, La Follette Middle School and Campbell County High School. But they certified the teacher up at Wynne and Wyodoke. I think JELICO still has to be certified. But anyway, they requested that, they would like to have that archery for those kids up there, simply they're back in, you know, where they're at up there, the way back up there, and there's not a whole lot I guess they can do, but she requested that she liked to have that. And for $4,500, we can put it in all the schools. Archery is a good thing and it's good for kids to learn and it's a good sport. Thank you.
For boys and girls, is that?
For boys and girls, yes, sir. They supply all the bows, all the arrows, all the targets for that money. And all we, all they do is just instruct. And they, she is already a certified instructor. And she teaches both schools. That's who I talked to about it, and then I talked to Gail about it.
So your recommendation, Danny, would be to go ahead and do that?
Yes, sir. That is my recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Wilson makes a motion then to approve archery for all Campbell County schools at a cost of $4,500. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by rector. Any further, any discussion?
Where's the money gonna come from, Donnie?
A lot of it's gonna be donated.
Okay.
Some of it was donated from Campbell County High School. They donated the $1,500. And then the federal, I believe it is, TWRA is, some of, you know, I think we may have to a little bit. She said we'd have to put it up front first, and then they would come back on us.
I think it's great.
I too.
You know, for $4,500.
Is that why the boys count to here?
I would, that could be. I would give that job, say.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, cast your vote. Anybody wish to change their vote? If not, please announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Cretemore, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Oric, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
All right. Congratulations, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, approved sale of Ridgewood Elementary School, conveyance of property to Ridgewood Fire Department.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I passed out three or four pages there before the meeting got started. And my motion's gonna be a four-part motion, once we get down to that. But if you look at it, the front page shows the tax card. Board of Education owns 4.78 acres at Ridgewood, where the old former Ridgewood School is. If you flip the next page over, you'll see the outline of the property. And along that northern boundary there, you'll see that the fire department has an easement for ingress and egress that comes back to that little fire hall building, which is shown in the bottom exhibit. In 1985, the Board of Education signed a lease agreement with the Ridgewood Fire Department, which was a 99-year lease. And it included that .41 acres down there, as you see it, and the drive easement, which is another third of an acre. I met with Mr. Disney, the chief down there on the 21st, and they have requested, if you flip over to the next page, that under the conveyance, once we sell the property, they would like for us to convey them, which would have a reversionary clause in that conveyance. It would come back to us if they ever cease using it. Instead of .41 acres, it would increase to .7 acres. And the reason that they requested that, if you'll look and see, the original property line ran within 10 feet or 15 feet of the front of the building. And it's gonna be very difficult to park cars in around that building. So they've asked for that additional area for their employees to park and for their trucks to maneuver in and out. And so I'm gonna make a motion that, first, that we declare the property surplus. That's my first motion.
All right. Motion is to declare the property surplus by Mr. Wark. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller. Any discussion?
What, what, what does the surplus mean?
It means that we don't have use for it anymore.
Okay. All right. Can we do the surplus vote by voice vote? No, do a roll call. All right. All right. There's the motion and second. Cast your vote. Any member wish to change their vote? If not, announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Cretemore, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Oric, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. So it's now declared surplus.
My second part is to, I'd request that we obtain a survey of the areas indicated on this page, too, showing the .7 acres and the remaining four acres, basically, to be broken out. That's my next motion.
Motion by Mr. Wark. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Lawson. Any discussion? If not, cast your vote. Any member wish to change their vote? If not, please announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Cretemore, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Oric, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you, Ms. Wark.
Okay. Next part of it is, once the survey is complete, I make a motion that we declare the existing lease that we have with the fire department null and give Director Schools and Chairman Parker the ability to go ahead and convey the .7 acres to Ridgewood Fire Department.
Motion by Mr. Wark. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rutherford. Any discussion? If not, cast your vote. Any member wish to change their vote? Please announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Cretemore, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Oric, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you, Ms. Wark.
And finally, I make a motion that we obtain the services of Longmire Realty and Auction Company for the sale to take place on or before December 31st.
Motion by Mr. Wark. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Lawson. Any discussion?
Are we gonna allocate any sale funds for Longmire Realty?
I figure we may do that next month.
Okay.
Or we could do it now. He said it'd be $2,500, is what he said.
Can we amend that?
I can amend my motion to ask for $2,500 additional to, which will be replaced, once we sell the property.
All right. Do you agree with that, Mr. Lawson?
You agree with that. You change?
All right. There's the motion. Second. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
If not, cast your vote. Any member wish to change their vote? If not, please announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Cretemore, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Oric, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, was that prior to December 31st, what you said?
Yes. He's thinking about a November, middle of November sale, if we can get everything worked up.
All right. Item D, approved purchase of bleachers, construction of concession stand and restroom facilities for Jellico Elementary Football Field. Mr. Collins.
I didn't get no bids or nothing. And another thing I don't know we need to add, I forgot to put on our steps and weights for football field. I have no weight. The weight is down. We've got a longer one, no weights. But anyway, I know season's over right now, but I can get some rougher bids by the next quarter. But we hope we spend all our money. But now, maybe, because this has gotta be done the next fall. It's down here. It had a whole lot, but I think we deserve what I'm requesting from there. It's not going there, nothing like that. It's just, we just don't got it.
So you're gonna gather information, Sarge and?
We'll have to have specifications. Sarge can get specifications together through the athletic director and stuff over there. And then I'll have to go through Donnie to be approved. And then we'll have to do a solicitation, form a solicitation to write up the pricing as it relates to being in position to evaluate bids. It doesn't have any impact on what Sarge's doing here. I think that probably what you're driving to is to designate funds to provide for, as opposed to approve purchase of. So I think what he'd like to do is try to have an estimate associated with whatever the rough cost is, so get a support action of the board to say, "All right, is that, whatever the number was I said there earlier?"
246.
Yeah. Is that what it was?
Capital outlay?
Yeah.
246?
Yeah. Of the $246,000 to designate, for lack of a better word. Sarge, you got any rough idea as to what the cost might be?
Just for the, two restrooms and concession stand, I'd say we're up to $10,000 or more. I don't know. That's just a rough guess. And we've got the steps. I say we've got about 30 feet of, for the other steps left off to build up to that.
Down up to the top.
I see, I see, I see where you're coming from, Mr. Marlowe. My personal opinion is I would be more comfortable waiting to see what Sarge brings back and then see. I mean, I, even though.
All he could possibly do, Josh, is to get the specifications, and then we do a solicitation. If you want to do it without trying to figure out as far as designating money, what we really need is, over here in this section where we were, request permission to advertise for bids, what we need then is an action by the board to say, approve permission to advertise for bids for these items. That's exactly how you can find out what the cost will be.
Where does, where does the middle school play at now?
That high school.
Well, I thought we built a field. We appropriated.
Yeah, we got nothing there.
And it wasn't built into the money that we appropriated last time?
The only thing, when we moved over there and architect came over there to build a fieldhouse.
Uh-huh.
We told them what we did except on the field, and the two restrooms and concession stands. It was between Jellico, Follett, those parts got left out. I don't know how. But we had started up what we told them we wanted. But if ever did go through, somebody said it wasn't there. So. That's what. Do you know how much money has been approved for that field? There ain't nothing approved for that field. Yeah, we, they've done work to it. We've already done the work. Right. But we haven't gotten no bleachers. We don't have no restroom. I went and looked at it. I went and looked at it. I checked it out. Let's see what we got. They were supposed to be in topsoil put on that field. Yeah, it's on there. We've got some round dirt on top of it, too, I saw. Well, that might fill it up. It doesn't look to me like what I'm saying is, whoever did it didn't do a very good job. And if we paid them all that money, we need to know why he didn't do that good a job. Well, that's just what I'm saying. I'm not against building a football field at all. I'm not against it at all. But I am like to know where money went and how it went. That's what I'm saying.
Danny, how much money we spend over there?
I think, I think we spent almost $300,000 on the field. We moved dirt right at that. Like that.
Is that right?
That's back, yeah. I put it right here. I've got the.
Jeff?
That's 2010. Well, if you spend all that money, and we know we have, it'd just be a waste if you didn't get some bleachers and some concession stands, something else up there. I guess what we need to do is like what Jeff said, just advertise for bids, and then you can see what it's gonna cost. And if the board don't wanna vote for it, it's gonna vote for it.
You need, we need to do something, try to get it over there.
If I remember right, I think when we were meeting upstairs one night here recently, Sarge brought this up, and there was a discussion up there. It may have been during the budgetary discussions. And rector and I were talking back to Sarge about trying to figure out how you would facilitate the location of the restrooms in line of the drainage pipes and stuff, because you'll have to do that and tie it into the city sewer. But I agree, notwithstanding that problem, the only way you're gonna find out what the cost for having the bleachers and concession stand and the bathroom placed over there is to authorize it for solicitation as an action of board, and then have specifications developed and do a solicitation. Then you'll know exactly what the cost will be, as opposed to kicking the can around. We have some money put up for the tee ball field and the baseball field in Jellico. And there's, I can't remember exactly, $75,000, I think, is the guestimate.
Is that county general?
No, that's out of the, yeah, not of your, but it's out of the capital projects fund I was trying to think, as we were having the discussion, what part of that, as a guest, would be associated with the construction of a bathroom area and an old concession stand. But I'd say that in rough numbers, $30,000 is probably not an exorbitant amount to guess as the concession stand, bathroom part of it.
We just renovated one that was 20, and it's, and it's small.
And this one will be small, too.
Yeah, so you're looking at 30,000 to 40,000.
Yeah.
And then your bleachers are gonna be, according to how many people you wanna see. If you do like we did at Jacksberry Middle School, they were 125,000. And what else do you say?
Stacks. You know, the hill.
Rector and pour them.
When we started this project, it sounded, did we build some restrooms at the gym in the school? I thought, at one time, we talked about using and gonna make access to both the basketball program and the physical education program. And the gym would be also utilized as the restrooms that as a, to be, to serve the football field also. We talked some about that. Whatever happened to that? But did we ever get those?
It was a little bit.
I don't think we did.
It's a distant issue.
We did that. You were setting that there and the bleachers. When you guys were the restrooms, we could have walked in about eight or nine of the steps. Not just to get down. And you guys go around.
Well, we discussed the other way. Not for that. Okay.
Yeah, I think the restrooms are part of the fieldhouse for the kids, not for the public up at the top.
No, that's right. Okay. Okay. I wasn't sure. I remember we talked something about that.
So what's the pleasure of the board? I think Mr. Cretemore suggested that do the solicitation of bids.
I'll get Mr. Rector to be busy with this next week, and then come over by here and I'll.
You just wanna hold off then? You wanna hold off until you've looked at it? Okay.
Okay. Good enough.
Next up, established beginning construction date for Jellico High Alternative School. I know the money's there, and we gave them the plan.
We're waiting on the fire marshal. Waiting on her approval.
The plans are approved, Doc. They're approved. What you're waiting on is a contract with the contractor. When Mr. Marlowe and I met, when we first did this, he suggested that we get a contract from a contractor who was gonna do the work that the building trades class wasn't. And then that contract be brought to him for review, review. and then that contract be brought to him for review, review, and then that way they could enter into a contract with the building trades class, and they are almost at the, at the end of that process. Mr. Davis, Mr. Ralph Davis-
That's right.
-is lacking, lacking just a few more quotes so that he can bring the accurate totals to Mr. Marlowe, and then once he sees that and that contract's entered, they can start any time.
And that includes the changes too.
But the plans are approved.
That includes the changes.
Yes.
He said that he got it, whatever, he just starts first of the month.
Right, so they are aware, Mr. Davis and Mr. Douglas are, that once they get their process complete and bring it to Mr. Marlowe, once he reviews it and sees that everything's in order, they can start.
Oh, Sharon.
Route three.
Absolutely, but you know, this is a general contractor, I mean a subcontractor.
Well, we got $100,000.
Ninety-eight, ninety-eight, ninety-eight change.
All right. Are you satisfied with, satisfied with that?
I was talking to Mr. Davis today, and he said all those windows that's in there, something like $24,000 for the windows. We can eliminate those windows that can't touch the big C and L.
He's already got them. Yeah, these architects won't even call it as much as you can, because they get paid on percentage.
All right, good deal then. So, next section, items for discussion, item eight, discuss appointment of a finance coordinator for the Campbell County Board of Education.
Mr. Chairman, I have this put on there. What I was, brought to my attention is sometime several years ago, there was some action taken by board at that time, I think it might have been 2006, to hire a financial coordinator that would actually work with the finance office. I know that we talked about that a lot in the interview process, when we interviewed the new directors. I would like for Donnie, you've now been in this office for a couple of years almost, and how much of your time does it take away from being an educator and taking care of, like Mr. Lawson said, to see all this stuff through in curriculum by working on financial issues?
Yeah, there's no question, I'm Richard here, and we had this conversation again the other day. Several of our staff, we spend so much of our time doing a lot of the, you know, a lot of the budget stuff, hours and hours and hours, and I'm talking about at work and we take it home too. And we had someone in-house there that we, where we didn't have to, you know, go over there all the time, we could just, we could speed up.
And still, everything would come across your desk.
Oh, yeah, I mean-
But it would not tie you down as much as the time is needed, and even your staff, I think some of your staff works a lot.
Oh, yeah.
On a lot of financial issues.
It would be wonderful if we had somebody right there in-house.
Well, I know you all passed it, but I, I don't understand why it never was put into effect. Does anybody, can anybody answer that that was here? Mr. Marlowe, do you know?
Ms. Hedley, if I'm not mistaken, proposed that when Dr. Blevins, her last year here, and the board approved it, and seemed like it went in the budget one year, and we just never did, I guess she never did fill the position, is that correct?
I don't even remember any of it, to be perfectly honest.
I was thinking at one time we, we approved that, I mean, I can go back and check.
Well, at the very least, I think it's something that ought to be discussed, maybe for next year's voting cycle, so that possibly there may be some funds found, or he's got his office he can work with. My conversations with Mr. Poston, it would be very needed as far as what he has to deal with on that basis.
I agree with you, Director, and we've had this conversation several times the last two years, and I advised Don to bring us back something next month, the costs associated with it, maybe the duties that person.
Absolutely.
Because I would support it 100%.
Should we run that back to us now?
Absolutely.
Way to pay for it.
We'll have a car wash, we need it.
All right, now, next, discuss athletic storage building for LaFolton Middle School.
I talked to Mr. Hedley, and their athletic building up there is really cramped, packed, full with all the football equipment and stuff, and he wanted to build a bid, and I told him I didn't think that'd be feasible at this time, but we had a lot of stuff going on, and we settled for a storage building, and he's would pay half of it. I think we did this for a school-
For Jellico.
For Jellico, and they paid half of it. Do you remember how much that cost?
About nothing.
No, okay.
About nothing, nothing.
Okay. We said he would pay half of it, and what it does, it opens up the inside of it, it got real cramped and full, and he asked if we could maybe get something for them. It's, it's my opinion that I would like to make motion that we pay for half of that.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Teacher disitemed for discussion.
How much, what do we tell them? I'd like to know what I'm-
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you, I'd say we need-
I don't want to know what I'm about to vote now.
It probably cost us $2,000.
$2,000?
Yeah.
Approved $2,000?
No, no, not half of that.
Half of that.
A thousand?
Yeah, $2,000.
So we're voting on $2,000?
Yes.
Not exceed.
So Danny, would you be willing to, Danny, would you be willing to amend your motion not to exceed $1,000 on our part?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I would do that, yes, sir.
Okay. Motion, second, Mr. Creekmore.
You've spent too much money there.
Any further discussion? Danny's up to $5,500.
Remember Big Lance, he caught Scott Hill out here tonight, that's what it was.
Any further discussion? Go ahead and cast your motion, this is for approving our part of it, up to $1,000 for an athletic storage building of LaFolton Middle School. Anybody wish to change their vote? If not, please announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Gerg, yes. Collins, yes. Creekmore, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Ward, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes.
Thank you.
I don't know what I would do that easy.
Item C, discuss seven and a half hour workday for teachers.
I put that on there, Mr. Chairman, is all the schools operating on that now, Mr. Poston?
Well, your minimum rules regulations call for a seven-hour school day. Tennessee School Board Association, in last month, you all approved the package that included the 15 minutes before, 15 minutes after, and that's approved the other night. I've asked several directors, you know, years ago, and I know some of us have been around a while, it's been 15 before, 15 after, and I know Miss Sharon and I talked a little bit about it some, a few days ago. It's pretty much understood that teachers and school people would report 15 minutes before, 15 minutes after, and over the years, and I know that's, some people, because of bus duty and whatever, they, they've made arrangements where it'd be like 10 or 20 after, whatever. Most teachers will come in, a great number of them will come in, a whole lot longer than 15 before, hour before, whatever. One of the things that the directors, we were talking the other day, like the guy that, one of our neighbor counties, he said, well, we don't stand at the door and check them like that, he said, but we, we certainly encourage that they be, be in their classroom, ready for school to take place when the bell rings. And I know it's not in the minimum rules regs, but it is in the UTSBA manual that we've got, so that's, that's where we are, and it was approved.
So, so all the principals, if you're not-
There were that-
-is telling their teachers.
There were.
Marlowe, you sent us a whole bunch of literature on that. Would you like to comment on that? I'd like to hear your opinion on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I, I had a couple of teachers call me and ask me if that had been changed, and so I contacted the central office, it was in that packet of information, those policies that you approved as a package, and so I got, went back and looked and, you know, tried to correlate. I even asked Mr. Poston, I was, well, some of the laws changed, when did they change it? So I went and looked, minimum rules and regs have not changed, under the EIA, the business rules have not changed, the state law has not changed. All of those say a minimum student day is six and a half hours, a minimum teacher day is seven. The policy you approved that TSBAs sent you said a minimum seven-hour day for students and a seven and a half hour day for teachers, and that's not what any of the laws say. And now it did say that it gave reference to minimum rules and regs, but that's not what minimum rules and regs says. That's why I gave you the package of information. I don't know that it was delivered on TSBAs' part, I think it was certainly mislead what they felt you policy should be and the policy that you approved, you know, based on, based on the state law that you policy. I personally would have been upset if somebody sent me something like that that was not in accordance with rules and regs and state law and students. We decided student day was six and a half hours, teachers were supposed to be like 15 minutes before, 15 minutes after, and over time, it's been an evolving process. We teach seven hours instead of six and a half, to make the students have a seven-hour day. That way they stop downtime. And we then are there another 10 minutes, and that's the principal's discretion, you want us there 10 minutes before school starts, 10 minutes after school's out, five before, five after, half of the faculty one, half of the faculty the other. It was all their discretion how to use those 10 minutes, but we were only doing a seven-hour and 10-minute day for the last 10 years.
This is going to be one of the things, Director, hopefully-
Now, there's a, there's a something different in that. We, if we have 13 snow days, we don't have to make a move. The cause of that extra 30 minutes. Now, if we don't do that extra 30 minutes, we'll have to do, we have to make every day that we miss it. So the extra 30 minutes is what covers up to 13 days that we miss for inclement weather or different reasons. And what she's referring to is what was made, made up in the teachers union when they got a contract. And for a long time, the teachers contract, they just worked seven hours. Well, we negotiated something down the line, and we got 10 minutes for half of them before and 10 minutes after, they don't have anything to do with the state and the TSBAs. That was simply the teachers contract within the AFT union's contract. And that extra 30 minutes, now if we do away with that, then we make up every one of those days that we miss. Now, that's the way it is. Okay, now that's the law, and that's what TSBAs wrote it. And that that you were talking about, Ms. Marlowe, was the teachers union and the AFT, and it has nothing to do with anything else.
What I'm talking about is a student day is six and a half hours.
That's the minimum day, but we go seven, so that if we miss 13 days, we don't have to make a move.
And we teach seven hours?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
And you, and if we miss 13 days, you get paid for it, you don't teach.
Let me say this-
All right, now, that's the way it is.
Yeah, there's a discussion, getting ready to start at the State Department and the legislature now. Jack Parker from Sevier County brought this to Director's attention the other day. The new commissioner is recommending that we do away with the snow bill day, and also looking at extended days, hours on the day, and extended days on the year, so there's a lot of things coming down. Of course, the, most of the school board groups and the directors groups have voted opposing, you know, the change in the snow bill day, especially if you take, like for Sevier County, it'll snow there when, done to snow in Alaska, you know, times, so there be times when they'll have to miss a day, and they're really concerned about that bill changing, so what we're doing here tonight may just, may be fruitless, but if this does take place, we're going to have to address the TSBAs, and I'm sure it'll be addressed again this summer, and the state board base case. Now, that's the information I have.
Director Poston, if they increase the number of days handled or the length of the day, will they be increasing the compensation associated with the day?
They have to, that's what I thought.
Josh, what was you going to say about-
Well, I was going to say, this was, you know, the, the part of the policy that we passed the first time was just on First Street, the way, the way I understood it, and so that's why I'd like to have this workshop before next month's meeting, so that we can get flush all this out, get, make sure everybody's on the same page, and then next month, we can start voting these, start voting on our policy manual, renewing, starting to renew our policies, so that's kind of, kind of what I, what I think would be a good thing for, you know, for, for our workshop session, which-
While I'm on that, Nick, October the 30th?
Two weeks from today.
Is that-
Is that be agreeable to you all?
Good as me.
Eugene, you okay with that? The 30th? Sarge, you okay with that?
The only, the only problem I want to have, I have a four-year-old grandson that's being operated on on the 29th. Things didn't go well, I couldn't make it, but things went well, I could be in there at some point.
Say six o'clock? We'll have six o'clock.
We're going to have it then.
We'll try, try to schedule it here, and if we can't have it here, then we'll have it at the central office, so.
Karen will answer.
So what's coming in scheduled for the downstairs conference room then, central office? We've got no space down there. Oh, I'm sorry, Sharon, one more.
Let me say one more thing, we had, when we did the school calendar, when I did the school calendar, you have the option of choosing to use all those 13 snow days for snow days or inclement weather. You also have the option to use some of them for professional development, which means that teachers are there working when students are home. And that's what we did for a long time, we kept it eight days for snow, and then we did five professional development days, and we did things on those days, you know, as a group of teachers. And you can do it any way you want to, when you do the school calendar, this day, this day, so approve it, then you can't go back and change it, so if you have 13 snow days, and you set aside five of them for professional development, you're going to have to make up five days of skills, which winds up lots of time in paperwork, and teachers working for that 100 and 110 days. But, you know, you have to balance it out, but that's why we did set aside professional development all the time, so we're working on the stimulus tonight.
Okay, so that workshop will be October the 30th, at the central office downstairs conference room at six o'clock, probably spoken to the end, we'll be there as well. Next up, discuss legal matters. Ms. Rachel, do you have anything for us? All right, last up, break the night of school board members, Mr. Collins.
I'd just like to, Mr. Director, what if this one day next week is bringing it to your mind?
Mr. Lawson?
Josh, the only thing I've got is, on that, on the 20, on the 30th, can we add an item for discussion at that workshop about the bus contracts? You know, Dale sent Director Poston and Larry and all of us a copy of that new contract, proposed contract, where we're going to lease those buses back to us, and we need to get that thing in for us, because it's costing us about eight or $900 a week in fuel tax.
I don't know that in two weeks' time, I can be completed with the associated calculations. I would try.
Well, we'll set it 10, if you don't, we'll-
If not, you'll have to punt on that, I'll try.
All right, we'll add that to our workshop agenda for that night, then the rest of the night.
Thank you.
I would like, I mentioned this the first of the meeting, for us to observe a moment of silence, and last month, we've had a couple of retired educators pass away, Ms. Louise Wood and Mr. Ernest Jones, and devoted to our community, devoted to our children, and so at this time, I'd like for us to observe a moment of silence in their memory of their honor. Thank you. Mr. Creekmore.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Berg? Well, congratulations to Mr. Creekmore on the birth of Mr. John Douglas.
Yeah, congratulations.
Mr. Berg?
I'll get Mr. Wilson to go to Campbell County High School, I've got a list of things for him.
We aren't going to discuss about committees.
We can have it put on the agenda, it would take board action, but-
Right. Didn't we like?
What was the question?
About committees.
You can have it put on next month's agenda.
We can leave it to talk about, can we?
Yeah, we can talk about it, yeah, we'll put that on there for items for discussion?
Yes, please.
For next month's, for next month's agenda.
Or on a workshop. Actually, I didn't know what it would be.
We've got three sections of the policy manual to review, plus the bus contracts.
We're not going to, maybe not do-
Plus the dinner that you're bringing, so we-
We'll be late. I'd like to do a good discussion for next month.
Okay, whatever you say.
Your chairman does that.
Your chairman.
Okay, next month?
We can just hang it on.
Okay, we'll put that on next month's item.
Well, quick, quickly, the item that I wanted to get in, the item for discussion, we had recently had some work done up at the ROTC building, Mr. Marlowe and I today, changed quite a few emails. My question is, is, and I don't know whether to ask the architect or Mr. Marlowe, but how did, how did this work, how was it requested to be, you know, why, who requested this work to be done? Mr. Julian?
I think it's an issue with Colonel Phelps, but I think-
And then you sent pictures to Mr. Mar-
Berg?
You sent pictures to Mr. Marlowe-
Uh, yes, I did.
And said that it, and there was some issue basically, because we had resolved, we thought, the drainage issue that earlier was going to cost quite a bit of money, when Mr. Marlowe had talked to you and the contractor before about some underground piping or whatever, and then we met with the contractor-
piping or whatever, and then we met with the contractor, and he came back and used his mini excavator and really did a great job and put, diverted the water around the building, and it looked good. And I actually went up there and looked at the, in a real hard rain, and it was draining. But then this was overseeding, is that not right? And what they'd done last week, is it overseeding?
There was kind of a ditch created, kept on down towards the softball field, and a lot of exposed earth, and the plastic exposed, and it was, it was, they brought in top soil, they reseated, and then the fabric you put on there.
Now, this work had no bearing on the contractor's retainage, did it?
I'm sorry, what?
This work had no bearing on the contractor's retainage, did it?
No.
In other words, it wasn't a neglect on his part? He did everything in his scope of work, is that not right? Okay. My question is, how much did this cost? Mr. Marlowe, don't anything over $5,000 require three proposals?
No, sir.
How many does it require?
Doesn't require even when you're talking about a change order to existing project.
No, no. But, but this guy could have, could have signed off on that, because it had nothing to do with his performance.
No, it has all to do with amending his existing contract.
Mr. Julian?
I'm sorry?
He's saying it had all to do with amending his existing contract. Is that true?
Could you please step up here where you can hear?
I'm sorry to take this time.
Hey, can you tell the Director that we're doing a change order to the existing contract?
Oh.
To the existing contract? Yes.
I understand what a change order is.
Okay.
But did you have to do a change order? Could you have done something differently that could possibly have saved the school systems some money? And yes, you could have. Is that not true? He was not bonded to do that change order, is that not right?
There's no binding of the contractor to do any work until he's contracted with.
But I mean, you weren't holding his retainage.
Hold up, hold up. First and foremost, the change order was authorized by the purchasing agent of the school system, Director of Schools, Poston, not by me. So I didn't do anything in the form of solicitation or otherwise. Could it have been solicited and went and got a whole other contractor or contractor in that scope of work and solicitation process and closed that contract out and did a whole new contract?
Yes. That's exactly right.
Did it have to be before you were headed? No. It was not improper to do a change order.
I didn't say it was improper.
Okay.
Never did insinuate in any of our emails it's improper. What I don't understand is, is why there was no discussion of why that contractor had to do it. And was it an emergency? I mean, from what I can tell.
You're directing your questions toward me, and I didn't make any of those decisions. None.
None at all. Who made them? Who made them?
Don Poston.
Now, we're giving you my story.
Yeah, I do. I do. I mean, because this concerns spending money that I personally feel we've spent up there that's way and far beyond what we should have spent.
Last Monday evening, about late, Mr. Marlowe called me, and said they had some erosion issues there at the high school, and of course, and we gave a little detailed explanation about the ROTC building around Haltware Mary. And I said, I wasn't aware of it. And he said, I'll send some pictures. And it was done this week for all the students around. And so, in the meantime, I said, I'm going to have to get some of my people apart, look at it, see what the issue is. I said, I want to make a real good decision for that, for the problem, but I had no clue at the time I went on the mission. I thought that the guys went up there, did this, walked around, and they were all situated. So that was a very clear threat. But it was an addition, and everything is an additional erosion. And so pictures were sent in, and then I had breakaway for that evening. And I didn't, I didn't make a decision, I wasn't. He called me, and John went in next time, yesterday. Yes, they're arcing, but erosion takes place. He sent some pictures in, and he gave a proposal, I think, for you guys, what it would take to fix it. And so here was the situation. You had all this going on, if I do it, if I don't fix it, then erosion gets worse. If I do, Director, to fix it, he said funds were available for that, then we'll be taken care of it in those days, those, the week that we were out. And I don't remember, there's about a half dozen emails that exchanged pictures. We got the before pictures, and we got the after pictures, and the work was done. I don't know. There was one of the emails that referred to $2,000 or $3,000 something, but it all came to some, with their percentage of hospital, I don't know. But I would have indicated that, like, well, if we don't do that, and erosion gets worse, then I'm the bad guy. And if we do do this, I might be the bad guy. So I made the decision, and I live with it.
And I support the decision then, and I support it now.
Mr. Julian, how much do you all make off that job?
Which job?
The redoing that seat. I'm just curious.
Typically, it would be $5,000.
So it's been about what? $350? $350? Okay. Okay, well, I would hope in the future that if there's any, any work that needs to be done, additional work on any of these buildings, I know we are not acting under committees now. I, I would hope that, that we explore every opportunity to save the taxpayers' money, because I, and we can say there are all day long, you can bring people in here and say, hey, it's a great deal, and you can bring people in here, say, do it $4,000 cheaper. But if you don't do it on the front end, it's like that. It's rushed, do it within two or three days, got to get it done. And I still don't understand why, why it was such a rush. But I understand your decision.
I'm sorry, boss. I was the last one to call back.
And you, you, you very well said that in an email, that you didn't know anything about it. Mr. Salison didn't come to you. He went to the architect, then it went to Mr. Marlowe, then Mr. Marlowe facilitated it to you, and then, of course, you made the ultimate decision. And I just don't think the finance department should take a role in trying to facilitate things that the school system wants to perform. And that's just my opinion. And I know that you have to do your part as finance director to follow these contracts. But who is the owner of an architectural, in the contract, who's the owner? Is it the school system or the county finance office?
It depends on the, if the owner of the different projects are quote-unquote the owner of the property, in the case of the school system, the school system own, is the owner of the property. And in the non-school jobs, mayor may be, or some other representative.
Yeah, I'd have to look.
They're different.
I'd like to have that answered.
They're different for different contracts.
Who's the owner?
Yeah, when it says owner and heart, is it Mr. Marlowe making those decisions, or is it that man sitting up there? And you've done said it's him, right?
I signed the contracts, but each, each entity here has its own, for lack of a better word, purchasing code. Agent, Director Poston for the school system, Mayor Barrett for the county, other than a separate elected office holder, the sheriff is the sheriff, the environmental service director for sanitation fund, the ambulance service director for the ambulance fund. And this notion that some way, somehow, the finance office is interfering, or driving, or controlling, is just not correct. All that happened in this situation in its entirety was when it came time to process the pay application, Keith sent me pictures that said, hey, this is the work that got done, but we got this erosion problem right here. And at that point, say, okay, go get some pricing together, so Donnie will be able to make a decision about whether he wants to do something about it or not. That's it.
All right.
All right, motion to adjourn. Make the motion.
Motion.